Like the church was so full, they asked people from the first service to go and make leave. So there was room for first time people coming because there was no.
Yeah, what church?
It's called the vertical.
I've heard of that.
Church and it's it's a huge old building and a little more modern kind of thing. But the pastor had a good message. So it's like, well, he's preaching about Jesus. So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's like, wow, it was just like.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine AM. We'll go ahead and get started. This is the county commission meeting for Cottington County. Today is Tuesday, April 22. It is nine AM and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance and Brenda.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Just reminder to please silence your cell phones so they don't disrupt the meeting here this morning. And then don't forget to turn them back on at the conclusion of the meeting, of course. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or by calling six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Is there any conflict of interest items for the?
No.
Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the April 22 agenda.
It's all move.
Okay, moved by Schwer, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Action to approve the April 15 minutes. Moved by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, action to approve the county and consolidated board of equalization minutes that are in your packet. Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Schwer. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven is discussion possible action with Rawville Township officers for additional Rafe funding. We could have them come on up. Good, please.
Recuse myself. I live in Rawville Township. I was on that board for thirty years or more. Yeah, and I don't know if it's, I mean, I, I'm, I, I don't get, well, I do. I'm all, I'm all the town hall, so I get paid for more than town hall.
Sure. Well, if you would like to excuse yourself, that's fine. I think we have enough here.
That way then.
There's no conflict.
Yeah, I am a concern. That's, that's why I remember doing this right now before somebody gets killed.
Okay, gentlemen, can you have you turn your mics on by just pushing that little button on the front? Yeah, when that turns green, your mic is on. Please identify yourselves for the record.
I'm Scott Lance. Of Rawville Township. I got this. My supervisor.
Supervisor, yeah.
Okay.
Brett Hendrix, Rawville Township supervisor.
All right. So what's, what are we talking about this morning?
We've got a set of culverts that are four of them, nine feet in diameter. And they were initially many years ago, it was a bridge. And the county was responsible for it and they took the bridge out because it was in need of repair and put in four nine foot diameter culverts, but they're too short. And the road just drops off. We can't even get a full twenty foot on top of them. And it just, the bank is so steep, so it's, it's really narrow. We actually. So we're looking at replacing the culverts with some longer sixty foot culverts. And we submitted a bid two or two years ago. We didn't get funding the first year because we didn't put it in the paper right away. So we had to wait another year. And the costs I've turned, we turned in a hundred thousand to repair them. And they didn't, in the initial estimate, I didn't include any of the grecs to gravel to include the side slopes to, because we've got way longer culverts to make the road bed a little wider. And cost estimates have gone up. Well, we did turn in two. The latest estimates from True North Steel. And the culverts themselves run sixty thousand for about, for the four culverts. They're nine foot squashed by sixty foot. And we turned in a bid from. Deutsch Escavating and that's about ninety three seven. So. Our initial estimate we turned in was a hundred thousand, but it looks like it's going to be close to a hundred and fifty two. By the time you add both of them up. So we're looking to get extra fifty two thousand that we didn't turn in. And of course, that's the total project. Our, our portion will be the twenty percent of that, but.
I guess I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
Commissioner Gable.
Is this a formal request?
Okay, and we got approved for the hundred, but we're coming back now to add over. Because I didn't account for all the gravel on the side and the rip rap and.
Be just an amendment or an adjustment to your request.
What, I guess, my, my, one question is this, are we still in line with all the rules with Rafe? Because it's all the state, the state laws that tell us what, what we can, can't do.
Right, um.
And we have, we probably have funding in the, in the.
Yes, and you did previously do this for Pelican Township when they discovered that they were short. And their bids come in, couple of years later, things have gone up. So you have approved additional funding to other townships.
As far as timing, all, all this, like the timelines, the requests, I mean, we're okay.
Yes, since they did meet all of the qualifications, they were approved in January for the hundred thousand. This is just now the additional amount that they have realized since that original request.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McElhaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Schwer. I think before we vote on this, we should probably add up and see what the exact amount that they're going to be requesting is so we can put that in the motion. Yes.
So on the, okay, so on the, this, that's not including cover material.
Yes, his does include the cover. His labor to put that in is I kind of got it penciled on the side is like sixty nine thousand, seven hundred. And the bottom is his, all the rip rap and the crush.
Right, right. So this is, so this is not the total budget cost.
No, that's just to put them in and to build it up. And then the next paper you should have got was the bid from True North Steel is for the culverts. And that's for fifty eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, so this just includes installation. Okay, so the installation of the culverts are not, not, doesn't include the actual culverts themselves.
No.
Or, or.
Oh, so the, Mr. Chair, the question I have is the forty two thousand, that's just for the installation.
There's a forty two thousand line item.
Yeah, there's a line item.
Says new covert installation.
Well, you gotta kind of include all them top.
Oh, okay.
You want is to get the equipment there, one is to.
I think our question is, is, does, where it says new covert installation on there, that does not include the covert at all?
No.
That's still, okay.
Oh, okay.
Each covert is. Graced it still. It's five foot, okay, just, so it's a foot, it's like a hundred and seventy five dollars a foot to per installation. I get it.
There's more material involved to widen up.
Right.
To that.
That, that makes the road up the code like.
Yeah.
The safety.
Get the slope.
Three to one or four to one slope, what is it's got to be.
Yeah, four to. But I don't know where I would bring this up. You know, I talked to Greg Barta at the L Tab. He keeps pursuing that we should, now this is a whole nother project. That it should become a county. Bridge. Being it was a county bridge. We called, or I called Banner to see if he would give us the specs on making everything. But he thought it was a conflict of interest because. He said Cottington County doesn't want any more bridges and he don't want to give us any information.
To use against you.
So he wouldn't even give us all the slopes or what type of grades or anything because he thought it was a conflict of interest. But we're getting talked on one end by South Dakota L Tab and saying, well, that's, that's a comedy bridge. You guys shouldn't be on it. And it was a bridge twenty, you know, I don't know how many years ago, I mean, for my time.
For my time.
So I, Banner will not give me any data for, because of conflict of interest. And I don't really think, even if you guys say no one, it's not a county bridge. I still feel banners should, you know, I'm not, I don't feel it's a conflict of interest for him to give us the correct everything that should.
Sounds like maybe misunderstanding, but it's because I think it's governed by, you know, the rules of the Rafe legislation, that, you know, the program that, you know, what, what causes certain characteristics of a bridge to, to.
Be classified as a bridge. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and we do have the amount, so.
Okay, so you are requesting fifty two thousand additional out of the Rafe funding. Twenty percent would be your responsibility. So of that fifty two thousand, that amount would be ten thousand, four hundred. And so the eighty percent of the Rafe funding would come to forty one thousand, six hundred. That comes to fifty two thousand, since that is the amount you're requesting.
Additional.
Yes, yep, over the hundred thousand that's already been approved. This would be additional forty one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay, Commissioner McElhaney, you want that added to your amendment?
Yes, please. Add that to my motion.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, any further discussion?
Just a quick question. So how much does that leave in the, but roughly, if you don't, if you don't have that number in front of you.
I do not have that number in front of me. We, we, yeah, we'll still be okay with this amount. Plus we'll receive more funding or did we already receive that this year? But anyway, I think we will be fine to add that additional amount.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
How does the? Timing of the money happen? For information purposes.
So typically, after the project is completed, you turn the invoice into the county. So say you've already paid for your culverts, you don't have to wait for the total project to be completed. You can turn in just for your culverts and, and receive that reimbursement back. Otherwise, yes, then you wait until the project is completed, you pay them and then turn in an invoice to the county for the eighty percent.
I did call True North and we got it, we have thirty days to pay the sixty thousand. So that's what you said, we can bring that bill in once we pay.
Yes.
And. Or, so we pay it first and then brings a bill in.
Reimbursement.
Bill to you.
Right, no, you pay it first and then the county will reimburse your township with the eighty percent.
It's kind of a fine line and you're talking quite a bit of money juggling around.
For a pound for us to swing it and then give reimbursement.
Right, nope. As soon as you've paid for something, then you're eligible to get reimbursement. But you do need to make that payment first.
And I think we can make a quick turnaround on that.
Oh, absolutely. We won't have to necessarily wait till we play claims again. I try to keep current with things that need to be taken care of, so.
That's ours. So it is not to wait till projects complete.
Right.
As the bills come.
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to item number eight, monthly reports. We'll get Andrew Delgado up here from emergency management. Morning.
Hi, Andrew. So until end of last month, I hosted the Lake Area Radio Club for their March meeting in, in my office. We talked about credentialing cards and took photos for, for them so they can get credentialing cards if they were to help during an. A declared disaster, it just becomes a lot easier to track their time and we can turn it in for volunteer hours to help offset some of our matches. They also talked weather spotter training. They actually did have a good turnout or like within Lark to weather spotter training. And then just if they wanted to, to talk to me during severe storms, possibly talked about getting one of the Lark members to, to man one of the Lark radios that are down there, which would be, which would be helpful during, during severe weather incidents. We completed two of three quarterly reports for HMEP grants. Hosted, I hosted the, the weather spotter training classes. Great turnout. We had fifty seven attendees over two sessions, which was really good. Last week, DJ and I, DJ, the commander of search and rescue. And I went to Custer for a basic inland search and rescue course. It was, it was a great class. The instructors were from the Air Force Rescue Coordination Center. They kind of covered who they were, what kind of services they offer. Like how we request them and so forth. We talked about lost person behavior. Search theory, had a couple practical exercises. Well, I mean, it was kind of an extended practical exercise where there was an overdue aircraft and we, you know. Had different positions within our teams and, you know, like we had an incident commander and a PIO and, you know, air search. Team lead and ground search team lead and we were able to. I mean, basically you see things from, you know, searching, searching via air. And then after we found the wreckage, you know, like talked about, you know, the people that we found there, like where we had anticipated they went, like which direction they would go, like how big the search radius was and so forth. It was, it was very, it was a great class. And then the customer search and rescue team, they were great hosts. They, they invited us out, me and DJ to see them map some of the trails that they have out there. I mean, different terrain and, you know, different use of the drone. It was just. Pretty interesting just seeing some of their practices and being able to kind of compare notes. And they shared, I don't know, there's white paper I still have to read, but. Just depending on where the sun is and how to get the best view from drones, like even into water and stuff like that, so. Just good stuff overall, very, I thought, very beneficial week. And then other than that, had additional. Committee meeting for, for policy meeting for search and rescue. So we really started looking at the policies that we had existing and trying to upgrade, update them and expand those policies. So, yeah, the five members of us that are like on that policy committee, we have eight policies proposed to the search and rescue board for, for review and hopefully adoption, so. Think that's about, about it for. For my update for this month, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, we'll move on to the sheriff's monthly report. Morning, Brad.
What? How's it going today?
Good, good, good.
Sun shining, could use a little rain, but.
Yeah. It'll, it'll come, it always has.
It'll come.
It was just.
You gotta be patient, right?
Just a teaser last night.
Yeah, it seemed to have. There we go. If you want to grab one and pass them on down. All right. We'll start with the commissary monthly balance sheet for the month of March. The bank balance end of March was twenty thousand, nine hundred, eighteen dollars and sixty one cents. And at that time, the snapshot was taken, it was nine hundred, sixty three dollars and thirty seven cents in the lobby ATM booking kiosk. For a grand total, twenty one thousand, eight hundred, eighty one dollars and ninety eight cents. Break that down a little further, the resident balances were one thousand, six hundred, thirty dollars and one penny. Commissary items and tax disperse, three thousand, seventy nine dollars and sixty five cents. And the balance seventeen thousand, one hundred, seventy two and thirty two. Back to our grand total, add them up, twenty one thousand, eight eighty one, ninety eight. And if you look in the bottom there. You'll see the county made three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy cents in total commission on commissary phone and kiosk commission. Which goes back to the general fund. If you flip over to the next page there, you'll see the monthly balance sheet for the checking account there. End of March balance, fourteen thousand, eight hundred, eighty nine, fifty nine. If you jump down to the middle, you'll see there was twelve dollars in copy fees collected, seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty seven cents. And sheriff's fees collected, five thousand, nine hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty two in executions that we collected and four hundred and fifty dollars in warrant fees that were collected. For a grand total of fourteen thousand and nine cents. Yeah, jump to the next page there, we'll hit the, some of the activity from the sheriff's office and detention center. You'll see in the month of March, we responded to five hundred and fifteen cases and calls for service, a little busier than February. Twelve accident reports were completed, seventy seven warrants were served. You can see now it's up a little bit more than the whole last year. Two hundred and five civil papers were served and there was three thousand, seven hundred and sixty four transport miles that were put on. It was a total of twelve trips and seventeen people that were transported. We did one trip to Colorado to pick up an inmate to bring him back, included in them twelve trips, so. Scroll on down to the middle there, Lee's got it pulled up still. Our average daily population for the detention center was fifty point four two. Our high ADP was fifty eight and that was on the thirty first of the month. Our low ADP was forty three on the fourteenth. On the twenty four seven program, on the scram bracelet, we had seventeen participants. Twelve people on the remote breath. Forty two people on the twice daily PBTs, forty eight people on the twice weekly UAs and one person on the sweat patch for a grand total of one hundred and twenty participants on the twenty four seven program. Was one hundred and eighty seven bookings for the month of March. Scroll on down a little more. We collected five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars in out of county contracts, three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars on work release fees, seven thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars on twenty four seven fees. And three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars on scram fees that we collected. Any questions there?
It's like a good month.
Busy month, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a couple other things here. Next week, the sheriff's office, we're actually hosting a chaplains training course here in Watertown, Lutheran Church of Our Redeemer. It's the International Conference of Police Chaplains, Chaplains that are actually coming here to put this on. As of two weeks ago, we had fifty five people signed up to that slash chaplains and law enforcement officers that come in and learn everything about being a chaplain for law enforcement officers and also for law enforcement to help manage chaplains and kind of their role in our, in our departments, in our offices. So that'll be kind of a, it's a three day class. Not costing anything. It's something that they're willing to come in. And there's a lot of people from around the area that'll be in next week, a lot of chaplains and a lot of other law enforcement officers. So kind of a, a neat thing that we're able to host here. Also, in-house there, we just completed our pressure point control tactics and taser training and some simulator training for our guys and gals. Firearms training is coming up here soon for our early spring firearms training. So, yeah. Just a quick snapshot of kind of what happened in March there. Busy month, there's been a lot of jail design meetings and. I know we've had one at, I've already had one this morning at eight o'clock here with Andrew and our architects. We're looking at trying to trim a little bit more off the law enforcement center side, so.
Then we got electrical systems and.
And mechanical.
So it's getting into the, starting to get into the construction document. Babies.
This week, we're going to be in Brookings for, oh, so well, commissioners, coppers. And part of that program is a tour of the veil. And I, it was just being built when I was through it last time. Is there something that, what kind of questions should we ask? But.
Like you said, we, we've toured that facility a couple of times. Basically just go in there, soak it up. Look at their control room, look at how the operations are, look at the. Their pod, kind of how that's set up and the visibility, the sight lines. Kind of look at the, the modern, that they're able to, their storage for inmate property. Just a little bit of everything. It's, it's a lot different than our facility here on how it runs and operates.
The useful thing is for me, whenever we tour these things, it's like, what would you do differently? What did we miss?
Yeah.
What did you guys miss, you know? And so that's what we're kind of trying to, all these detailed meetings that we keep talking about. It's, you know, it's the sheriff and Matt, you know, the chief corrections officer talking to the, we're talking to the architect saying, what about the, this detail or that detail? And I mean, it's really interesting kind of to watch the process, but that's where you, you're, you're experts from both sides. Talking to each other, working on all those things to try to prevent, you know, minimize those kind of moments where you say, I wish I'd have done it that way. So we're trying to minimize that.
So, yeah, there's been a lot of chats with other sheriffs and sheriff of Brookings, Clay County's building one. I've been chatting with Sheriff Howe down there. Going to meet with him again this week and just kind of discuss some of our things that they're currently building one. And then we're working on designing one to be built. So he's looked at our plans and I'm going to meet with him and kind of see things that he has seen that he wishes he would have done different and kind of working back and forth with other sheriffs and so.
The last time I went through the one at Brookings and it was, like I said, it wasn't complete. They were still working on it, but they had a stack of cameras from here to the top of that TV. And I said, what we could do with all them? I thought they're going to try to get rid of them. They don't hold all those cameras and I mean. Apparently it must be working.
Yep. Like you say, even with a new modern facility, there's still going to be cameras that have to record everything that, that happens and events that happen. But visibility, and that is one thing, like you say, when you go in there and notice the sight lines and the, the visibility of ease of being able to see the inmates on everything that they're doing, so.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks.
Yeah, so we'll move on to item number nine, action to approve the purchase of two patrol cars for the sheriff's office as budgeted in twenty twenty five. Brad?
All right, I would recommend ordering two Dodge Durangos for the total of like forty one thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars a piece. I recommend buying them locally here in Watertown. I compared that to the state bid and around seven hundred and some change cheaper per vehicle. Plus you would save the cost of transporting and having to run to wherever, whoever has the bid and pick these up and bring them back. So they need to know by May first, that's why I got it on the agenda for today. They must have a influx of people ordering, I think, probably because of the tariff scare. So that's why I was hoping to get these approved.
Forty one thousand, two hundred.
Two hundred and thirty one a piece, yeah.
A piece.
Forty one thousand, two hundred and thirty one a piece.
It'd be eighty seven. So we have a motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion?
It is a budgeted item, both of those are, correct.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, action to accept a quote for XP all purpose cleaner for the detention center as budgeted.
We got a quote for four thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars and eighty seven cents to replace a current cleaning system that shoots steam and high pressure water for cleaning up cells and for the maintenance staff to be able to clean up. Just the other day, there'd be an inmate that smeared feces around on their cell. They use this type of equipment to help clean that up. The piece of equipment that they have is outdated and they're starting to have issues with it and it's, can't get parts for it. So this is a budgeted item for this year to replace this with this all purpose cleaner.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Schwer. Any discussion?
It's not a built in thing, it's something.
It's a, it's like out of a little cart where they can wheel it around, fill it up with water and.
So we need sort of.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Action to authorize application of the UJS Court Security Grant.
I know we've kind of, you got this one, Steve?
I can sit in.
Okay. I know we've kind of discussed this in the past a little bit. We're going to apply for up to ten thousand dollars. Steve's been working with a couple of companies to get us some quotes for, to apply for this grant. And I think you had some.
I had three quotes and something like that from some previous ones and through that process and so forth. I did budget for this project this year. Also, that's why we're going ahead with applying for this grant.
What's it for?
It is for cameras, upgrading cameras in the courthouse here.
Yeah, it's a regular thing that UJS makes available for towns to apply for.
Move to approval. Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney to authorize application for the grant. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Number thirteen is discussion possible action to approve extending the treasurer's office hours from eight to four through May. Carol's not here.
I think we missed twelve.
Oh, yeah, uh, we took number twelve off the agenda. There was a modification to the agenda.
All right.
So number twelve, uh, needed to come off. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for that.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. You approve that?
Motion to approve. Second by Gable to approve the treasurer's office hours made to four through May. Any further discussion?
Just. And just, uh, for your information, Mr. Chair, we did have a meeting last week when you were, uh, at your thing and, um, she explained how and we, we were aware of it from our conference too, that, uh, the, the problems are being pointed out very well with the, uh, state. But, uh, the correctional issues haven't started happening quite yet.
Right, yeah.
It's kind of being delayed. And it's, it's not just us, it's everybody in the state, including the state people.
Statewide issue until they can get them resolved.
So we're looking at May thirty first.
Through May thirty first? Is that okay?
Yep.
Right? So we do have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll yeah, okay. All right, so note the board will not meet on the twenty ninth of April due to previously adopted policy. That would be the fifth Tuesday and the policy of the commission is, uh, that we don't meet on, on the fifth Tuesday. So thank you, Commissioner McElhaney. Commissioner McElhaney has a, has a, another, uh, uh, issue that he needs to go deal with at this time, so he'll be excused from the news. Thank you. Be all over the news later. All right, um. Number fifteen, action to approve abatement applications. Wow.
Good, wow.
I like that. Public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at, the only thing on your agenda is Sioux Valley Commissioners Association meeting on Wednesday, April twenty third at noon in Brookings.
And we also have a planning and zoning meeting, which I think that's automatically, uh, put on the agenda.
That's tight.
Yeah. Planning and zoning that will be on, uh, Wednesday, twenty third.
Nine at seven thirty.
Seven thirty at night.
Tonight.
Tonight, yeah, tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, governor's lunch on, uh, Thursday.
Is that at Lake Area?
Lake Area, yeah.
Sure, it was last Thursday.
Well, I bought tickets and they said it was this coming Thursday, so.
You might be sitting there by yourself.
It's on a ticket, so.
All right. Okay, let's move down to old business. Anybody have any old business? And I think that yours will fall under new business if I. Okay, so any old business? No old business? All right, how about new business, Commissioner Gable?
Number one, so I mentioned, I think last week or the week before about the city considering the, uh, the building permit fees. So we have to apply for building permits since the, the jail site is within city limits. Um, or it's at least there's, there's debate over that, you know, whether or not it comes up to apply cities. But in, in any event, it's made sense to do it because, so the city can be there planning and they do something, you know, so that we can do our planning. Um, and so the way the building permit is just covering, they, they authorized that the city wants me just to charge it be a ten thousand dollars as a just to cover their, the basic costs of doing the work, um, as opposed to, but one hundred and forty some thousand dollars for the, if it were the full price of the building permit. So, so appreciate the city doing that. Um, definitely a very positive attitude about working together, a good understanding of the fact that, um, you know, a jail is really a community asset. Even the counties have the responsibility to build the thing and provide for it, run it. Um, it's really a community asset and the fact that, you know, Watertown is in cutting economy just makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate the, the, uh, the spirit of working together and, uh, you know, like plenty where their mouth is, um, on the part of the city council and the, the city staff, particularly, um, Brandon Hammond, the city planner, she was very, very helpful in walking us through this process. And when we do have questions about this kind of thing, she's been very helpful.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm sure you get. Um, yeah, a couple of things. So we have, we, as I mentioned, we have a meeting, uh, today on just another one of the detailed meetings that we, we touched on. The sheriff, this, this one's getting into some of the, the details of the electrical and, uh, other mechanical systems, um. And also I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, uh, the digital summit on Thursday last week in Pier and, uh, they actually put me on a panel session, a kind of panel discussion, but, uh, as kind of a I like to official kind of the person, you know, like us that need to make decisions about what we do for IT solutions. And so while I get back on, I'm thinking about cybersecurity, you know, what, what are some of the, you know, the, the things to think about, whether, yeah, like cloud, you're things like cloud based solutions and all that. So it's kind of, it's kind of good for us to be aware of it, particularly since we don't, we we don't use the, uh, for people's information. We don't even have like an IT person, you don't have an IT department. And we use in contract with a company to provide those services and walk through the process. And that's worked out really well for us. But at the same time, you know, we want to be, uh, on the ball and, you know, being aware of all those kinds of things that are going on. So that's, that was helpful for me. So it was free, the state put it on, we just had to get there. I just had to get there, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, anything for the open? Public comments? Anything for the open? Anything for the open? Commissioner comments? All right, seeing none, uh, is there a need to move into executive session today? No need for executive session, look for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Oh, Gable, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.